Good evening and welcome to the October 15, 2024 meeting of the Barrington Planning Board. First item is called to order, roll call. You are now our full-fledged member. Start the roll call, please.
Now, President.
Mr. President.
Tessie, your president.
Frisco here. All right, review and approval of the minutes, starting with October 1st, 2024. Any comments, corrections, whatever?
I did have an individual in town point out to me that at the last meeting, the attorney said that she recognized that the prior administration had made errors, but that wasn't captured in the minutes. So, wanted to point that out to me, but I'm not gonna argue that point.
Okay.
Do you want me to review?
It was in the meeting minutes.
You don't have a line number, obviously, because it's missing.
Right. It was in reference to, the conversation was in reference to the attorney making a comment about, like, prior boards, and it was after the conversation around overlooked circle. I don't know exactly where she made it.
Overlook, that's one thing we probably don't want to get involved in again.
We can re-review it and everything.
It was just brought up by a general member of the public in regards to the minutes.
In that case, we should pay attention to it. Brought up by a board member? Thank you, pardon?
Have it, like, re-reviewed around.
Okay. So, we're gonna...
Not approve.
Not, we won't approve that.
They didn't get asked me about it, and I said, "No, it's not in there."
Okay.
Because I will say, there was no information in the Facebook posting. It says that there should be, but there's no background information in the week's notice. Like, the CIP wasn't there, any of the zoning articles.
Oh, when she Facebook posts it?
Yeah.
Tiffany wants to keep it short and sweet. So, if you want something changed...
Well, I think all she's doing is putting in the agenda.
That's all she wants to do.
But then it says, says that all the meeting materials will be in there as well. Please for that, but...
So, she should change that language.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay.
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 Well, if you click in the agenda, shouldn't you be able to, that link you to the, that should link you to the documents?
She doesn't want to be...
But... I guess I don't understand.
That's fine.
You're saying it's...
It's none of our business.
It's not linked, like, the CIP is not currently in line.
Well, nothing is in line. So, either we should link the documents or not send the notice that...
Okay, I'll tell her to update the notice then, because she has some form that she prepares. I just have her drop in the, what we're talking about.
Okay, next, we have the meeting minutes from October 8th, 2024. Any comments?
Motion.
Motion to approve.
I second.
Seconded by Bob. Roll call, please.
Now, bye.
Mr. President.
Tessie, your eye.
Frisco, your eye. All right. Next, we have staff updates with the town planner.
Um, just, um, just a continuing reminder about the calendar for zoning amendments and the training opportunities that you guys are probably sick of me saying to the interest. Just have them on there if anybody is interested to go. That's all I have.
Thank you. Item number five of the business that may properly come before the board. Item A, capital improvements for 25 to 2035.
So, before the board, tonight, you have a draft report from all of the department heads and a matrix that we have priority with each department. I know it kind of seems a little bit overwhelming. And the priority within the department is what the department head had decided was the most important. Last year, there was a list composed by, I think, out of the select board process on what things to look at. I have a more simpler one that I can have you guys look at, that I can share on the screen, that talks about what's been done last year and what may be bumped this year, but I'm not sure how they're gonna prioritize it at the select board level, if that's easier than you look at, or if you guys have any questions with any of these. Depends how you want to move forward with it.
Scott?
Yes.
First of all, it seems like some of the things on here are actually not capitalized. If you look under the conservation commission, all but the first one are not capitalized items, and a few of those in...
I would agree.
Okay.
So, we should make sure that they're capitalized. And I have a, so, we had our budget committee meeting as well today, and I asked Connor, make sure that, as we're looking at the highway department vehicles for people, they list out what's needed. We have a certain amount of money that's put away in a warrant every year. We want to make sure that the balance of that account never gets to zero or below the next purchase that we have, so we want everything to be... And it also raises a question about, is the price that we're quoting today, it was from two years ago, is it still valid? So, Connor was gonna take a look at maybe putting a sort of 3% increase or something so that we actually can estimate that the full cost will be, not at today's dollars, but in future dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else?
Um, to answer that question, the departments have done the best their ability to price increase each of the vehicles this year on the vehicle replacement schedule. I don't think it was necessarily a percentage, but it was up at least $10,000 to $50,000, depending on what piece of equipment it is. So, they are accounting for that. Just to kind of go back for your comment, that they're not all capital projects. I hear you. And I understand that, however, I know in the past, I've been, we've been directed to look a little bit beyond that, too, because there could be other granting opportunities or that these are priorities within the department. If that's something that you guys don't want to look at, that is fine. And so, what I'm hearing is that you don't want to see any of the projects that land use has slated for then, conservation commission...
So, let me just...
The town clerk for equipment.
So, a capital project, I should just... I think there's a separate question offering, actually with...
Right.
And, and, you know, I think we're running into something where, you know, we're hiring somebody mid-year, at least. And so, 2026 is gonna be in the... So, the question is, is what are the future obligations that will, as a result of some of the budget changes? And Connor's nicely presented that. I also asked him to ask that out, and we're gonna need other... Because what we do with the budgeting is essentially a one-year look. But really, we need to look. So, I've started creating a spreadsheet that I'm... But it doesn't sync up. And so, actually, when I look at that, like, we call it a CIP, so, then, and it's not... There's no plan in here. It just says within the next 10 years. And for me, what I'd like to know within the next six years, for example, have more information about when in the next... Is it gonna be year six or year one? You've got the, you've got all the Swains Lake dams, all these... Eight million dollars we have on...
I guess I should back up in saying, too, that I have backup documentation from all the department heads. I can provide that to you. It's probably about 200 pages, so I'd need some time to print all that out.
Yeah, I don't know if it has to be 200 pages, but if you just look at the next six years...
Well, each project says, like, on their sheets...
It's prioritized 1, 2, 3, 4.
Yeah, and it will say, like, 20, at the top, like, like, this one's 2025, for example. So, like, recreation has something that they need done in 2025. And so, on their backup documentation, it says 2025. So, there's a more scaled-down view than necessarily, than this probably shows.
Because, I mean, even if you just had, within next six years, if you broke down the six, oh, I'm just on 2025, 2020. That's the one it starts. Because I am increasingly concerned that we're putting things maybe for... But it seems like we're gonna...
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, the Swains Lake dam, they say that there's concrete... Right, and yet, here we are putting it on. I don't have a sense of, now, we've been doing some design, but I have no idea how long it's gonna take to get that design. How long it's gonna take us to get a bond to do all this, and how long... I don't even have a plan. There is no plan here. It's more of a... And the question is, should we really have a plan? And let the select board choose and say, "Well, no, we think that it's over." For whether we just sort of, or how we do it.
I don't have an answer for you, because this is directed how I was supposed to prepare this. I know last, I can't remember if, at the ABC committee last year, if we prioritized projects there. I know at the select board level, we did. So, there is a list of, like, what to look at and how to, like, move forward.
I've seen only 30. And I have never seen anything like that.
Do you, if you want, I can share it on the screen to show you, like, what we worked on last year and what we're, like, kind of proposing for this year, maybe? That might be a little bit of a...
Maybe I'm going to more depth than you are, but I'm really looking...
Well, you brought up a good point. Curious what Connor's reaction is. He compiles all this from all of the department heads before it heads over here, so... I would think that would be the place that...
No, I compile all of it.
Oh, okay.
And then, I've asked to meet with him about it.
Yeah.
The plan, it's the planning board is responsible for...
Responsible for making an advisory note to the select board. And the select board is responsible for expecting the...
You have to go through and...
No, I have to do all this.
No, we would, we do send on a note, because if you remember, you weren't here last year.
About, like, Richardson Dam and a few other things, too.
Yeah, they dropped down, and then they pushed it back up, so... Whatever we do...
Yeah, about Swains Lake.
That's why I'm wondering, like, how, like, much it's involved.
Do we go? Should be paying for that, not the...
In the ABC group.
In other municipalities, they usually have, like, a joint committee, which we have not done. And maybe that's where we should be involved more, because the...
Completely agree with your comment.
Because the planning board is, like, the authorizing agent, essentially. But without having, like, the budget background, like what Scott's saying, like, we don't know what the operating budget is. We don't know, I don't know what that is. I'm not sure with that, but...
I'd love to have a capital, because they're all gonna come up as warrant articles, right? Most likely, not all of them, but most of them.
Yeah.
And so, if we look ahead at the tax rate and we say, "Okay, for next year, we're already, we've already committed by the point of hiring people this year, I think it's $70,000 next year," right? And they're gonna add another person, we're adding a person or two every year. So, you have that. Because the rest of the budget increases. And then you have the capital projects. So, we're gonna have a $3.5 million for public safety.
It's harder and harder to get full volunteer fire. We're gonna have a full-time...
Yeah, yeah.
It's $150,000 per year.
Yeah.
Renew hire with fringes included.
And I fully support them, but we don't have that transparency in planning.
I guess my question would be what we were just discussing, and I don't think you heard, was last year, we put the Richardson Dam down to the bottom of the list. It went to the selectmen, and they put it to the top. So, how much time are we gonna spend and how deep are we gonna go if what we do doesn't really matter?
Well, that was kind of the conversation we were having as well here, is I was saying, we can make a recommendation, but the select board is ultimately the decision makers of how that fund, those funds are expended.
Well, maybe, as Vanessa mentioned, a lot of towns have a joint meeting at the early stages of doing this, so maybe this early consensus might be helpful than this swapping back and forth. I agree with Bob. I mean, last year, we spent a lot of time talking about this in detail, and it didn't...
Got changed.
It got changed, so...
So, if you wanna, I don't know if you can, you all read that?
Well, I can take it up with Connor's ABC meeting next week, if that helps. I mean, I've had talks with them since last year about trying to come up with a graded...
And I know it's been, like, evolving, too, because before I was here, the capital improvements wasn't updated for, like, five years, six years. So, I think we're just trying to get back in the groove of things, too. So, anything that would help.
It's not a prison, I mean, but it's just sort of maturity.
Right, yeah.
I'm trying to get to it, I would like to.
I would be concerned that when I look at what's coming, and, and I would say this if Joyce were sitting here next to me, and I actually make it a point to tell her that they are, they're, the decisions they are making will have long-term ramifications that are gonna drive the tax rate into an unforeseeable rate that we should never live with around here, especially after, and I can speak from personal experience in spending six years sitting on that board to help drive that tax rate down to an affordable range, and we got it there. And then, I moved off of the board, and they're going buck wild with what they want to spend on as opposed to what, they don't understand need versus want. And they are gonna drive the taxes in this town back well into the mid-20s or higher with the staffing increases they have and the budget proposals that they're making. It will be unaffordable to live here, and they will devalue the property that we work so hard to actually make worth something around this town.
I'm gonna say something that's different. I'm gonna say that actually, we've been underfunding. We've known about all these dams and culverts, everything that's coming along, and we've not been socking away forever. And so, that's why we're gonna have to have this 6, $10 million bond to take care of all these. Now, maybe...
I don't know if I agree.
Okay, well, we know...
Because it's there, but they've...
But the Swains Lake causeway has to be replaced. Why aren't we just doing a bond? Why not a stock whistle?
Well, I mean, as a, you're a budget guy. You know as well as I do, socking money away is actually devaluing the taxpayer dollar, so it's not really a great use of taxpayer dollar to do it that way. The whole idea of putting money in that way is really a bad plan. What you should, we should be doing is zero-based budgeting, running our, what is our minimum operating budget to run the town, and what are the add-ins that we think are worth putting in front of the voters to vote on, which brings you up to within the range of what our targeted marginal tax rate should be.
Yeah, so, I think, yeah.
But that, that's, but, but it's, it's, it is, there's a right way and a wrong way to doing all that and then expending funds correctly. And just stuffing money away is, is, as much as it helps balance it out, it's not really a good way to manage funds.
And then, you get your tax rate up fairly high in one year.
You could, you, but the select board can actually control that by taking non-expended funds and then rolling that in to help offset something in the next...
Talking about the municipal tax rate, which is pretty low.
It is, but the problem is, is it's gonna go through the roof, the way they're spending. And like, when you talk about the causeway, things like that, those are conversations we had even back when I was on the board. And it was, there was no desire to go tackle that project beyond the select board at that point. Like, the highway department, we're like, "No, we have too many other priorities. We can't do it." I said, "Okay, but the day of reckoning will come, and it will be a much bigger day of reckoning."
$2 million per a culvert. These culverts must be made of gold. But what they want to do is widen the causeway and go and ride a path, a walkable path. That's where the money's coming from. So, they're gonna have to put a copper dam in and so forth, too.
Replace the whole bridge, essentially.
Well, the bridge is only, the bridge doesn't even meet the DOT length, so we don't get any...
It's a box culvert. That's all it is.
Yeah, it's just a series of beams that were laid there. It's like, it's 18 feet wide, so it's just a teeny thing.
It's not even that wide.
Yeah, all right, 15 feet.
You're still overestimating it.
About 13 and a half feet.
About eight feet. You can't get a boat under it, not, not, nothing more than a rowboat.
Well, for $2 million bucks, it must be something.
It's gonna be beautiful at the end of the day. I mean...
Should we be saying, what I'm hearing you say is, it seems like we're... Price for what it is. Do we have any, do we, do we weigh in on that, at least to advise?
Well, I just have the idea they just put the figure in. I don't know if they get any pre-engineering or thought any, hey, what do you think this would cost for anybody?
This is part of the problem, and this was a point Dan Arrow used to make, is that you have an engineer that comes in and makes some wild recommendation, and you get some buck wild number tied to it, and then that's what you live with, which he actually made as a case in point, that they said that you couldn't fix the, the upper end of Castle Rock Road for under $1 million. He was like, "Fine, I'll buy all the crap lots up here that nobody wants, and I'll prove to you it can be done for way less than that." And he did, for a fraction of that, like, I, like, less than a tenth of what they were proposing. Why? Because he was like, he, he was like, "I want to prove how ridiculous this is." And he's right. It is ridiculous. So, the real question is, do you put an engineer on staff that can do the work for the town and is bonded by the town to actually help make these decisions or evaluate this? And then you go do it, and because he's doing, doing the legwork to make these decisions, you would ultimately save millions of dollars a year.
I don't want to go back and relitigate all past decisions. So, it's, here we are today going forward. My biggest concern is to predict what the town will be. Because I think these things do sneak up on you, and it'll be like, "Oh, my goodness."
I don't know if they're sneaking up. I just think we're not addressing them in a productive manner. I mean, Richardson Dam is a perfect example of that. We're gonna, theoretically, we're gonna spend $350,000 of conservation commission money on a mud puddle? It's just a bad decision.
You've got that, no, definitely.
I think you take the boards out, you let the water flow, and that's how you mitigate it.
If it gets below two feet, it's not considered a dam by the DES. You can just do that, and you'd have a little water surface.
Right. And if you went out there and probed it, you'd probably find that a good portion of it is not more than two feet deep anyway.
But again, we're litigating the old. I'm just saying, I want to take, I want to be able to predict the future, and I can't do this.
But do you want to look up here, then, and you can show, like, what was...
From the budget committee, wasn't it?
Um, anticipate so. I know, um, so this was last year's. The ones in green are gonna be carried over to the next year. Blue was things that, wait, let me go back. Future fiscal years for the blue, 2025, green, and then the orange was what was completed. And they had notes off to the side of, like, what everything...
I think that would have been good for us to see that.
Was.
Did they buy any forestry truck?
Um, they are getting it, like, next week or something like that, like, very soon. They've ordered it, they paid for it, it just has not arrived.
It has not been delivered.
Yes.
Well, why don't we table my discussion, and I'll talk to Connor and see what the best way is.
Maybe, uh, next meeting, we could have this, you know?
Sure.
Just to give us some idea what's been done, because, I mean, obviously, it's not on here if it's been done, but we'd like to know...
Right, and then...
Historically, what's, what's advancing.
For this year, when you're saying, like, oops, looking ahead.
Yeah.
This was also taken from priorities of what, of last, last year's, when this was taken, like, so, like, the Swains Causeway. I've been told by highway that Nipple Brook needs to be done because it's red listed by the state.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Nipple Brook. There needs to be a steel arch culvert on Stagecoach Road.
Oh, right.
It was recently red listed by the state, so that needs to be addressed.
Well, I mean, the good news is it's red listed, because then it means 80% of it's funded by the state funds.
Bruce Brook, actually. Comes down from Stratford.
Is the 750 R20%?
That's the total cost.
Okay.
Yeah, ours was gonna be like $250,000. Over, yeah, 850 or something. It's over.
Yeah, well, there's...
I don't know what the latest figure is. It was 1.2.
For Nipple?
Oh, okay. Stagecoach Road.
I'm assuming Young Road's causeway and the culvert there's gotta be listed at failure or red... Well, it's not listed as a bridge, so it's not gonna be on a red listed item.
Nope.
Which means we bear the cost of that wholly.
Yeah, but I guess there is some idea that we're gonna get grants, and that's the other thing that I, I wonder about this. So, there's all this stuff that's on the recreation side, and we think that there might be a grant, right? So, although it's listed here, and it's a million dollar, $3 million, knowing that you might have a grant is also quite greatly important. And that's not noted on here at all. So, it's hard to really put it all in context. That's me.
I agree, yeah.
But I like to do it.
Yep.
And realistically, some of this should be recommended for approval with the condition that it receives grant funding. That way, we're not just blowing taxpayer dollars.
So, something, too, when, when you're looking for things for grants, like, like, I'm working with the highway department for the Tolan Road. There's culverts under there that are failing, and there's grant opportunities through nature conservancy for that. And if it was not on this list, I mean, I know that's a capital thing, but if it wasn't on this list, they wouldn't get funding. So, that's kind of also for recreation, too. Like, if they don't put it on here, it's not considered important to the town, so they might not get funding.
But it would be nice to know if there was, A, there's combining of them, like, this is... Or if you think that there's a grant, just a footnote, a description, right? Something that says opportunity, grant opportunity, just so that it's sort of known. And the other thing I'll say is that if you look on the line total of, what's on the third page, for the causeway, it's $2.1 million.
Because it's separated out, so it's 6 million is what it's estimated at.
Look at the highway upgrade of the old Settlers Road culvert. That's already been on these states' to-do list, right? They already get 80% for that schedule. Showing 1.4 million.
That's where it's nice to see the full D. Okay, I'll talk to Connor.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Well, so, if you look up here, so, if you look on there where it says, "Grant state funds or donations anticipated", what are you, what are you looking for? So, like, the park stuff, it says, "Applied, 2003." And then there's other things where it says, like, "Possible" for grant funding.
I missed that, I'm sorry.
If you look at the top, so, it's like, page four of eight is what I'm, I'm seeing at the top. It talks about, you know, priority within next six, six years, seven to 10 years, nine, 20 years, grant state funds or donations anticipated.
Yep.
Capital reserves.
Possible, possible, applied.
Revolving funds or warrant articles.
But, but it's also, maybe there's a way to put strongly possible, meaning, like, with the Parks and Rec, with all the TIF district, it's sort of waiting for funding, right? And we know that it might cover all of this. And so, when it says "possible," it doesn't give you a sense of...
Right, yeah.
And it doesn't give you a sense of, well, is it gonna be just $10,000 or $150,000?
I just think of all the good things that 7 million could pay for that aren't on this list. Well, that's 7 million worth of Parks and Rec's TIF funding recommendations.
Almost paid for the expansion of the elementary school.
They're not putting the food...
Of course, the select board got the latest figures. I think it's 904 students. A through eight, so, change. Population actually went down.
I've had a long one in...
I missed you.
K through eight, population went down slightly. Think, when I add 10 more classrooms. I don't think they're talking classrooms. They need rooms for special ed kids, you know?
Maybe...
One teacher and two or three kids, or just one kid.
Maybe move the school administration building out of that one, and you could buy one for a whole lot less money and put them in it, and then you could have the elementary school reacquire the building that they own originally. Sorry, that's just a little bit of logic playing into this.
Must be a lot of room in the middle.
And at least then, you'd have some air-conditioned classrooms.
Right.
Okay, so, we'll...
So, I guess I need to know, if you guys, what the direction is, if you wanna relook at this? Because I asked Connor last week when this was forward to you guys, if we wanted to talk about it at the, we wanted to talk about it at the ABC committee or not. I had not heard back. He has not given me that answer, because I think I'm presenting...
When's your next ABC meeting?
It's weekly now, so...
I'm presenting on the 22nd, so I figured it made sense if I was gonna be there anyways for my budget, so perhaps go also over CIP, but I haven't, I mean, I'm just saying I haven't heard back yet. But, or do you want to wait until after that? Because... Because I think this is where this shook out last year of like the list, what they were gonna do in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, like to look forward, and like I even did kind of like a, like the warrants that passed.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and approximate budget, I mean, I'm not finance person, so I don't know what the exact numbers are in the finance department, but based off of like what it said on the town vote.
Maybe you could put on the, intended for the next meeting, just for an update. But we're not gonna make any decisions today, it seems like. And so at least you and I, well, I, I'll talk to Connor before the A B C. If you're coming in the A B C, maybe we can have a little bit of conversation. It'd be fair, like, what you need to talk on this going forward. And then we'll report back at our next meeting.
That's right. So the next meeting is Wednesday, November sixth, um, to report back to do this. I just want to let you know we have a very heavy agenda. Is everybody come? So I don't, we can give an update if you want, but, um.
I'm just giving an update.
And at that point, are you guys wanting to come back at the work session and talk more about it, or make their recommendation to the select board? But I just kind of want to get an idea of like, what you're thinking of.
I guess I would say, if it were. I, I would probably just have a discussion with Connor, say.
I'm wondering if the things you're thinking of doing require us maybe to put in the next C I P. We may want to do a lot of changes.
If you just want to say this is good enough for this year.
Already cooked, in other words.
Well, we could say the recommendation is to look in the next fiscal year of doing some kind of joint committee or forming a committee of some sort to get a better.
Right from the get-go.
You know, better, um.
Down with the planning, with the select board and figure it out. They have some thoughts, good. Ultimately, they're gonna do some switcheroo's probably, like.
And that's a pro, a pro.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
But, you know.
But I, we spent a lot of time, as I remember last year, talking about. No, but I mean, it, they just, we moved some things around and they just moved back where they were, so.
Cause they're more, yeah, like the operating budget.
Yeah, right, yeah, I, I don't begrudge them that, but, you know. Maybe starting with a joint meeting might work, with that.
Want to go in and have some bit on a gymnasium? No.
Um, so then, I would say.
If you look at the number, you might.
I would like if you take away the operating dollar factors that aren't really capital.
But I would think you, you probably should talk to Connor and get some information. Tell him what the board is thinking, that maybe, we'll probably just pass this one, and next year maybe we can do a joint meeting.
And top page six.
In the foundation part, you know, we're starting to build up, so.
Yeah, I'm happy to have a conversation.
Okay. So are you recommending this to go forward to the select board, or do you want to wait? I guess that's where I'm not clear, like, it sounds like you want me to move forward, but then you don't, so.
To look forward to doing a new one next year.
Okay.
With more input, and this one is pretty well done, should we just pass this on?
I would just say, change the line totals that way. I think that's wrong.
That's his own.
Which one's that? It's on page three.
I probably added it wrong.
The Highway Department Culvert Projects.
Page three.
It says two point one million dollars, but the projects that are listed there.
No, uh.
Okay.
It does, but it's, aren't you only doing project one, is that the revenue bond and separate warrant articles? No, I see what you're saying, never mind, shut them up.
Yeah, it's not, the formula's not been.
I saw the formula didn't add up, but I just figured there was something I wasn't accounting for in it. Normally, I can go in and like click on it and see what's.
Yeah.
Added in the total.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
Motion to move it forward to the select board? Sure, I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Naffa.
Thank you.
Jesse.
I think so, recommend to remove the operating budget items. And discussion of a.
One for the twenty twenties.
I hear you corrected, even though they're operating budget things, they're putting it in here in hopes to get grants?
Possibly, yes.
So, so they.
I, I don't wanna. It doesn't fit in with the definition of a capital.
Right, I don't believe it belongs there, but.
You know.
I don't want to deny somebody getting a grant either.
Well, it should be a separate document, maybe.
Yeah.
Grant, you know, there is a list of grants for the following non-capital items.
Yes.
It could be at the end of this document.
Yeah, I mean, you could, yeah, you could submit it at the same time, just call it something else.
They need a training on wants and needs.
Are you gonna run for office again?
My wife, my wife would murder me.
Okay.
I just ask her every year, how, every time, how much more you want to pay in taxes?
Item five B, proposed zoning amendments. Next item.
We're going.
I, I just wanted to get your feeling on the Conservation Subdivision two pages I passed you. The first, the page below that, Bob, is, um, during our, what's the committee called, Master Plan slash zoning Subcommittee?
I'm not sure anymore.
Which are four members, and Jamie's there too. And a couple of things were raised, um, one of the items by Jamie was that the.
So which one, which one, sorry?
This one here. Which describes what, this is, this is the result of that.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, okay, got it.
So this part, um, increase the size, um, increase the frontage. The whole point was, maybe if the frontage only at seventy-five feet, what you're getting is a compressed, um, area. And they end up using all of the lot as lawn just to make it look good. And by increasing it to a hundred feet, increasing the setback slightly, what you could do is create a greenbelt between each of the houses. I mean, that's kind of the whole point of this, that they wouldn't look, um.
Like a city?
Like a city. Either that, don't cut down the damn trees, like they've done a lot here, like that hill's the last hillside, they just cut everything down.
Yep. That, that's so you can get the views that they're advertised.
The view of Mount Jobe on that hillside is that way, not the roadway, so.
But Mount Lees Management is that way.
Right, Mount Lees Management is that way. Thank God they're not on Tolan Road, they get the smell too, for free. Okay, so that's, I don't know what anybody thinks of this. Uh, the lot size increase and increased frontage means the house won't feel constrained, which often leads to a setback, mostly full lawn and thus no screening, that's the screening thing. Uh, there also, a lot, there seemed to be a lot of interest in bumping it up to thirty thousand square feet from twenty, which most towns, I believe, that I've looked at do have already. Any comments?
No, I agree with it.
Okay, and then the second page is just taking our current standards, it's such units for individual lots, and add, and putting in what, what these would result in. Explanation is it's actually the D E S basic one, because the, the D E S thing depends upon the slope. This is from, thirty thousand is from zero to eight percent slope and sandy soil. Anything above that, the D E S goes up, but yet they come by, they come and approve lots of twenty thousand square feet, which are not sandy and, but they say it's fine for septic, so who are we to argue with them, right? So what do you think of this? Should we make this one of our proposals?
Yes.
Yep.
I think the, the only one that I have issue with, and, and I wouldn't say it's an issue.
Yep.
With number four, the leaving the setback with the existing trees and plantings.
Because a lot of it is crap, you mean?
Well, I, I think if you get some houses that are very close to their setback.
Yep.
They have to clear those trees to get equipment, to pour concrete, to dig the hole. So as a result of that, they're either gonna do it anyways, or they're gonna be coming back before us and asking for waivers.
So the greenbelt thing is out.
I, I believe in it, and I appreciate why, and I like it too, because I wouldn't, I don't want to look out.
Jamie, that is the number one thing when people comment on this development here and others.
Every one of them.
Yeah.
Agree a hundred percent.
All right, so. Well, is that, is that the, I, I guess the question I would ask, is that a problem from the standpoint of the subdivision in that they're creating a lot that now is forced over to one side of it? Because they're not laying out their subdivision in truly usable lots.
Okay, I guess I could see the point where, when they're designing and they know those trees have to stay.
Right.
Okay.
That, is that logical for you?
Yeah.
Okay. You want to vote on this, that we would want to move forward with this?
If this was a consensus move it as written, that's fine.
Okay.
You don't necessarily have to vote, are you guys gonna vote? Formal voting won't be until we actually do like.
Okay, but this go on our list of, well, we've already approved.
As written here.
Yeah, written there, but I mean, our list of all the other things have already, this has been agreed to, all this stuff.
Right, so, um, are you done?
I'm done.
Okay.
Can I write in? Vanessa, could I ask a question before we, just before we move off of this? So one of the questions I was asking the board was, how would you folks feel about, um, putting an amendment to the Conservation Subdivision that says, um, if so, if a developer chooses to do a Conservation Subdivision, one of the conditions is that the conserved land is open to the public, is a condition of approval?
We could put that in and, uh.
I, I guess I want to know is, would, if I write it up, would the board be interested? Is there interest in moving that forward?
I guess it would get up to Laura to look at it and know if there's a property, right to use your property. I don't know.
They have a right, they have a right to do a regular subdivision and use their property, I don't see it as being a rights violation.
Point that was discussed by one of the contractors. He said if a guy comes in with a yield plan, yield plan is okay. Then he comes in with a Conservation Subdivision, and before he even does anything, he goes to the Z B A to get relief. And I want to put all these fourteen driveways right onto a class five road, I don't want to put an interior road. He thinks that they shouldn't go to the Z B A, they should default back to the yield plan that was approved. In other words, that, that's the relief, the relief is going back to what we approved.
Right.
But I don't know if.
I actually don't think it's.
It's a good point, good thing, yeah.
Why would, why, why would the Z B A, the Z B A is supposed to give relief when you can't accomplish?
Right.
When you can't do it, the, the job that you're designed to do, right, it's a hardship.
There is no hardship, and we've already given you a perfectly good plan.
Right. There should be no relief on, really, in any subdivision plan, because you're doing a layout, you get to lay it out, so it is a hundred percent compliance, compliance, so there shouldn't need to be any relief.
Right. So it's not a hardship, a hardship is you want to spend the money on an interior road.
Right.
To shoot through the buffer that's supposed to be a hundred foot buffer, or a hundred fifty foot buffer, which we're proposing, and crash right through it, defeat the whole purpose of the buffer. Okay, yeah, write it up. Okay, what do you think?
That's a poor decision. Support decision, um, if there is, if you have, and if you have proposed language of like what section you want it in and that sort of thing.
I would put it in as a condition of a Conservation Subdivision, it would go, it's like a parent's, like, G or H or something on it, I'd have to go pull the exact.
That's fine, I don't need that right this second, um, if there's something that you want to send to me, or you're saying, you want me to look at it, I don't, I guess I'm not sure.
I can write it up and send it to you.
And then, um, we can look at it at a next work session meeting, which is this third, um, Tuesday in November.
Okay.
It's the week before Thanksgiving.
Or is it the week of?
It's not the week of, it's the week, uh, before.
Before, okay.
Now, Thanksgiving was late this year.
Okay.
Or later, earlier? I don't remember, okay.
On this, these pages in the packet, I'm going to the last page, charitable gaming definitions. Not that they, anybody's banging down the doers to do this, but maybe we should restrict it to, um, regional commercial. They're gonna do it. I think there's twelve licenses, beg your pardon?
We talked about that last meeting.
Yeah, but I'd like to add a conditional use permit to that.
Oh, oh, make it C P as opposed to P?
Yeah. Because, uh, particularly if you get Route Four, there's a lot of residential areas over there, interspersed with large chunks of land, and having a casino just drop in there, but it may never, you know, probably will never happen. I think there are twelve licenses now, and they're gonna go to at least nineteen. There's already one in Rochester, a building one in Rochester, and there's already one in Dover, so it's probably something you don't have to worry about. You never know. Okay, that's it, change that to a C P, please.
I think we, um, you're saying too, that not to be called it Games of Chance, but.
I think that you use that, they do use that term, Games of Chance, but the zoning, the R S A calls it charitable gaming facility.
Starts getting flow at night, yeah?
All the kids will be extra hungry.
So we'll rename it, and then, um, the definition just says, the R S A is amended.
Right, right.
Okay.
And everything else.
Everything else on this looks, looks good to me.
Update.
Yep. All right, so. Go back here, anything else on zoning? Do you have new business? I have some interesting things here. In twenty twenty-three, over, the number of people, twenty thirty, the over, the people over sixty-five will now outnumber the number of children in New Hampshire. Kind of eerie, huh?
It's taken this long?
Yeah, all growth between twenty twenty and twenty, July twenty twenty-three is due to migration. The population, um, grew by almost twenty-five thousand, but forty, uh, thirty-nine thousand five hundred births and forty-six thousand deaths, a decrease of six, uh, six thousand six hundred, so that's just gonna continue as people like me reach our due date.
You're recycling.
In the last five years in Barrington, we had two, yeah, Soylent Green, remember that? Uh, two hundred and twenty-seven births and two hundred and ninety-eight deaths, so it's hitting every, everybody now, all the counties.
This was in New Hampshire fiscal policy.
It is, yeah, and some of it's from Carcy.
Yeah.
Also, voting, this is interesting. Since twenty twenty primary, two hundred and eight thousand long-term residents of New Hampshire left the state or died. Two hundred and forty-five thousand potential new voters moved in or reached voting age, you know, current residents. And then, uh, forty-two percent of the residents were born in New Hampshire. People over twenty-five, only thirty-three percent. Well, just look at the board, you're the only one born, born here, right?
I wasn't born here.
You weren't? I was hoping, where, where are you born?
Rhode Island.
Rhode Island, so nobody on the board or our planet. Huh?
Right, right. Masshole.
Masshole here.
I wasn't born there.
That's what's, oh, yeah, um.
Ron.
Ron, yeah, next town over.
Staunch, staunch masshole.
Yep, yep, and Buddy was too, Buddy was, so. Yep, asshole and proud to be.
Yeah, we can't all be perfect.
Yes, spent seventy years in, down there. Okay, I'm a motion to adjourn unless anybody has anything else.
Second.
Shepherd High.
Thank you, everyone, we're out of here, it's seven nineteen, Driscoll Eye.
I second, doesn't matter.
Thank you very much.